We'll bring the meeting to order. Worthington City Council, regular meeting. Agenda 5:30 PM, Monday, November 13th, 2023, City Hall, Council Chambers. If I could have everybody rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Well, welcome, everybody. We have no additions or changes to the agenda, so if we have a motion?
Move, approve, and close.
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right, on to public hearing.
Moved open the public hearing.
We have to read the heading first, please.
Public hearing to authorize issuance and award sale of $5,140,000 in general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2023A, and $4,090,000 general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2023B, administration case item one.
So move. Open the hearing.
Second.
Okay, open the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Open, hearing is open.
As Rebecca Kurtz with Ellers, our municipal advisor, to come forward. This is the, at its October 9th, 2023 meeting, the council adopted resolutions authorizing the issuance and sale of $5,140,000 of general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2023A, as well as $4,090,000 general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2023B. Bids were received at 10:30 AM this morning, and the information presented to the council at the meeting was handed out earlier this afternoon. Exhibit one and two are resolutions awarding the sale, fixing the form and details providing for the execution and delivery thereof, and the security therefore, and levying adversarum taxes for the payment thereof, for the payment of the general obligation bonds, tax revenue bonds, Series 2023A, and GO public improvement bonds, Series 2023B. Council noted that the, what was handed out in the packet earlier last week had blanks in it, which could not be completed until the bonds proposals were received this morning. In addition, the city did receive updated rating review from Standard &amp; Poor's, and it remained at AA minus and was considered stable. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca, who will walk through the sales report and give us the good news.
All right. Good evening, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. And I believe that you have two packets that look like this, that were distributed either, I don't know if they were printed or emailed, but I will be using those as kind of a summary with the talking points. As mentioned, we did accept the bids for two bonds in our office today, and before I get into those results, also as mentioned, we did go through a rating report with Standard &amp; Poor's for both of these bonds. And congratulations, the Standard &amp; Poor's Rating Agency did affirm the city's AA minus rating. A copy of the complete written report is in the packet for the sales tax bonds, or the 23A bonds. But just for those that may listen, or the newspaper and others that may not have the whole report right in front of them at this moment, I just want to read a couple highlights from that report. Again, Standard &amp; Poor's Global Rating Agency assigns its AA minus long-term rating to Worthington, Minnesota's Series 2023A and 2023G, 2023B, general obligation improvement bonds. At the same time, S&amp;P rating affirms the city's AA minus long-term rating on all of the city's general obligation debt, and as mentioned, the outlook is stable. In the report, Standard &amp; Poor's writes, "The AA minus rating reflects their assessment of Worthington's stable local economy, the high reserves and robust liquidity with routine balance to surplus operating results that they anticipate will continue into the next future years, the good city's good financial policies and practices, and along with its well-defined policies and procedures." And again, it talks about, "The stable outlook reflects Standard &amp; Poor's view that the city will maintain its reserves, aided by stable operations, conservative budgeting practices, with all else held the same." So that's a very high-level overview. I'm happy to answer questions, but again, that complete report is in the packet. And I just want to say, congratulations, because that is clearly a testament to the staff at the city for what they have done with managing and overseeing the budget, but also to you as council, and your policies, practices, and guidance to staff on how the city should be operating financially. So congratulations on maintaining that AA minus rating. With that, then, we did receive bids for both of those bonds in our office this morning at 10:30. I will start going through the results of the anticipated $5,140,000 general obligation sales tax bonds, or the 23A bonds. Again, these were bonds that were used to reimburse sales tax revenue expenses, mostly related to the Aquatic Center project, and debt services anticipated to be paid solely through the sales tax. With that, we did receive eight bids. Northland Securities, who is a company based in the Minneapolis area, was the low bidder. In the packet, there is a summary of the eight bids that were received, along with their rates. And with this, the low rate from Northland was a true interest cost, which is what we use to award bids, of 3.6979%. As a comparison, when I was here about a month ago, and we called for the sale, we were estimating closer to 4.4%. So the interest rate came in quite a bit lower than where we had estimated. There are a couple unique things, I view them as positive, but I will try to simplify as I explain this, but I am always happy to answer any questions. You will see the final amount of, principal amount of the bond is, has been reduced from what we anticipated being $5,140,000. It's been reduced to $4,925,000. Along with that, though, in that chart, if you're following along in the middle of the sale day report, you see there is a note that says there was a re-offering premium When you take the results from the bid that it came, the way it came in, with comparing that to how the underwriter is not only bidding our bonds, but then going to be marketing it to the third party, we received what we call a premium bid, meaning that we received more money than what we needed on the bond issue. With that, for this issue, we, when structuring it, we had the goal of having annual debt service payments of $600,000, and that was the same as in the structure that we brought forward when we called for the bond. So we kept that, where your annual debt service payments will remain at about that $600,000 annually. But with the way the bid came in, and with this premium, the city was able to keep the debt service payments at $600,000, receive roughly $408,000 more than we anticipated, but because of the way the bid was provided by the underwriter, we also were able to reduce the principal amount of the bond, down to 400, or 4.925 million. I know that's a lot of odd-moving parts. I think the main message I want to bring to you today is that your annual debt service payment will be $600,000. You have about $400,000 more than what we anticipated this bond would be able to support. And with that, with that principal amount being reduced to 4.9 versus the 5.1, you're paying a little less in interest, just because that paramount is lower. With that, I know there's a lot of moving parts, happy to answer questions if there are on that, but with that, we are going to recommend awarding to Northland with that interest rate of 3.69%. With this, if you do choose to award, the money would be wired to the city on December 7th. And then the final point that I will make before opening up for questions on this specific issue is that we do have the bonds callable on February of 2033. So to the extent that you have additional funds from the sales tax, or interest rates drop dramatically, there would be an opportunity in February 2033 to refund that, or pay it off early, and not have any penalty. With that, I will pause, and I'm happy to answer any questions there may be on the sales tax bonds.
With the reduction in principal, assuming we take the full term of the loan, what's the savings on the interest?
Um...
Is it in here?
I do not have that number in front of me, but I would be happy to finalize that, and I can sense, connect with Steve tomorrow and get that for you.
This offering was a little bit unique in that we, for lack of better explanation, we asked, "Give us your best offer that keeps our payments at $600,000 for the next 10 years." Is that...
That's exactly what we did on this one, yes.
Because of managing our sales tax revenue, we wanted to keep the annual payments at $600,000. And with that, we actually ended up receiving more funds than what we had originally estimated, so we'll be able to use those funds to pay back our internal loans that much more.
Just because of the lower interest rate that we got?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Selena?
So we got eight bids. Is that pretty common? Is that higher, lower than normal?
Under today's, I will say personally for me, I was really happy with what I saw today, not only where the interest rate came in, but also that interest of, from eight different underwriters. We, a couple of years ago, that would have been pretty common. In recent weeks, we have not seen that level of interest necessarily, so yes, I was really happy with eight, and I think that's a little more than what we would have expected on our end.
Yeah.
This is more of a Steve question. So with the issuance of these two, and the timelines, the availability to pay off early, possibly, if there are more funds, how does this set the city in perspective of being able to complete and possibly bond more for the projects that haven't been started?
We'll be limited in our bonding capability, probably for the next five to seven years.
Okay.
We will still be growing our reserve account each year, because we're, if we stay on track and stay on our forecast, we'll be collecting more sales tax, and then we're paying back in our two annual bond payments for the two separate bonds that we would have. So on one hand, we will be looking at future projects based on the added reserves that will accrue. We cannot bond past the deadline of the 15-year sales tax. So if we, you know, at some point, the question will be, do we want to bond a short-term, a five- or seven-year bond, or should we just accrue, use that accrual and invest that in future projects? So...
More than anything, I wanted people to be able to hear that. They got a little spoiled in the fact that we were able to do some major projects right off the bat, very fast, but it's not all just going to keep rolling at that pace. I mean, ultimately, people needed to hear that, because, not, not because it's not generating enough money, but because the bonding isn't available because of where we're at with current bonds, that we have, you can only have so much.
Right.
Anyone else?
Do we want separate resolutions? Approve separate resolutions? So we would need a motion to approve the resolution for the Series 2023A bond.
Oh, okay. Do we have any testimony?
Move to close.
Oh, do we want to close and open for the, no, we want to go on to...
In open meeting?
We want to do the, we want to do the 2023 bond, 2023B bond.
So similar format on the 2023B bond. Again, as a reminder, this issue was the portion that was being used to finance the public improvements for the project, and this debt service will be paid with special assessments to the benefiting property, along with a tax levy. This issue, in my opinion, is a little more standard with the way that you've seen your other improvement projects in the past, so we had our project amount that we needed to have to fund your street projects, and we structured based on what we needed to fund the street projects versus what we wanted to pay for the debt service, where we backed into the bond amount. On this one, again, we've talked about the rating that was affirmed by Standard &amp; Poor's at a AA minus. This one, we also received eight bids, kind of a follow-up to the question on the first issue. We were very happy to see the eight bids. I believe on this one, we get a list of interested bidders this morning before the actual bond sale, and there were six signed up for this one, so we had a couple more come in that was always a pleasant surprise. Again, Northland Securities was the low bid. Kind of a coincidence that the low bid was Northland on both of them, because they were two separate issues. So just to be clear, they were not tied. You could have just as easily seen a different low bidder for this issue. The amount on this one, you will see, remained at the $4,090,000. The interest rate on this is 3.9143%. As a comparison, we had estimated just over 4.6%, so again, more than about 50 basis points, better than what we had anticipated, or more than about 60 basis points. This one, we also received a premium bid, and so again, we are able to fully fund the improvement projects that we needed to, and the city is going to receive $247,599 more because of that premium bid. That amount can be used for, if there are cost overruns or anything on the street projects or in the improvement projects that are currently underway, or you can hold that and use it for other related improvement projects. So it does not need to be spent specifically on the projects that we anticipated, as long as it is spent on improvement projects in the city. With that, the maturity is a couple years longer, because we did go for a full 15 years. We weren't limited by the sales tax legislation, but we still do have the same call date. So again, these bonds could be prepaid or refinanced beginning in February 2033, to the extent that that was something that the market might allow, or that you had additional funds. We also would have funds to the city on December 7th, so a lot of similarities. With this one, we are looking at annual debt service being close to principal and interest payments at about, between 375 and 400 annually. With that, it will be written down by the assessment revenue coming in, so we are estimating that the levy would be roughly $250,000 annually to support this bond issue. With that, we are, again, like the first one, recommending awarding to Northland Securities with the interest rate of 3.91%, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Pretty straightforward. Do we have any testimony? Need to make a motion for both of the...
Close the, close first. Close hearing.
Okay. Motion to close.
Close the hearing.
Okay. Seconded, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Now we need action on the two resolutions.
I've moved to adopt the first resolution for general obligation bond 2023A, as presented.
Second that.
Here we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I make a motion to accept the bond for Series 2023B, as presented.
Okay, we have motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. On to the consent agenda. City Council minutes, regular City Council minute, meeting minutes of October 23rd, 2023, special City Council meeting minutes of October 18th, 2023, minutes, boards of commission, economic development authority meeting, minutes of September 25th, 2023, and bills payable. Do we have a motion?
Move the approval to consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, on the next case item is resolution approving the charter commission member appointments and reappointments. At the October 9th council meeting, they approved the nominating committee recommendations for committee appointments and reappointments, and under state statute, City Council must also by resolution, that was included in the packet, nominate the eligible individuals and submit a petition to the district court to appoint individuals as members of the Worthington City Charter Commission. Just as a reminder, those that were nominated are Andy Johnson, Matt Kennedy, Zubie Jansen, Melissa Elsine, Glenn Thieringer, Jay Vargas, and Lon Lee. So council has requested to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution of, for the charter commission.
Okay, motion, seconded. Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next case item is Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, Workforce Housing Development Program grant application. Housing Partnership is exploring the development of a market-rate rental housing project at their Grand Avenue site. They've requested partnership from the city and applying for a workforce housing grant from Minnesota Housing. State's Workforce Housing Development Program targets small to medium-sized cities, communities, or areas in greater Minnesota with rental workforce housing needs. Funding is available to build market-rate residential rental properties in communities with proven job growth and demand for workforce rental housing. Communities are required to secure funds that match $1 for every $2 in funding offered through the program. Tax abatement offered by the city, Nobles County and Worthington School District qualify for this matching requirement. This is a competitive funding program, and the Housing Partnership has offered their services in preparation of the grant application. Attached as exhibit four is a proposal from the Housing Partnership to act as the city's agent in preparing the grant application. Proposed fee for grant writing and community engagement is a lump sum of $5,000. Staff's recommendation to contract with the partnership in preparing and applying for the grant on the city's behalf. So council actions request to consider and approve the proposal for the preparation of the Workforce Housing Development Program grant, and if Rebecca has anything, she may have other expertise that she may offer. If you have questions about this, and to point out, to emphasize, this is not income-based housing, this is workforce housing, and it will be market-rate. We just decided that with the complexity of this grant, and having the proper emphasis, proper language, and that it would, we'd be far better off if we had someone that had greater familiarity in the specifics of this grant to prepare it.
I agree completely, and I'll make the motion to move forward with having them write the grant at the cost of $5,000.
Second that.
We have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next one is League of Minnesota City's Grant Navigator. So the league provides many services to its member cities, including their Grant Navigator program. This program is aimed at providing small grants to assist cities in applying for state, federal, foundation, and nonprofit grant opportunities. The Grant Navigator initially caps funding at $5,000 per city. Staff is requesting authorization from council to submit an application to the league for their consideration in selecting the city of Worthington and receiving funding assistance, submitting the previously mentioned workforce housing grant. Attached as the exhibit is a resolution noting the city's support in moving forward with engaging Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership in applying for a housing grant on behalf of the city. Council action is requested to approve the resolution.
I move to approve. One second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, the next case item is Law Enforcement Center amended lease and operations agreement. Law Enforcement Center Joint Powers Committee reviewed the lease and recommends amending changes to the city's rent and capital reimbursement payments. Annual rent shall be $1, due and payable on about January 1st of each year. Capital reimbursement annual payments of $197,000 from the city to Nobles County shall be due and payable on or about January 1 of each year, beginning on January 1, 2025, and thereafter. The remaining balance will be amortized annually by the county incorporating a simple interest value equal to the Minnesota Association of Governments investing for counties' current rate established on the previous July 1st. Copy of the amended agreement is included as exhibit six. Council's asked to approve the amended Law Enforcement Center lease and operations agreement, authorized the mayor and clerk to sign, and I will turn to our two council members that are on the joint committee, Ms. Colblynn and Mr. Cummings, if they have any further information or comments they'd like to bring forward.
The one thing I would just kind of add is that this magic rate, we really couldn't, this was something that they proposed to us. When you look up the magic rate, I believe it's 5.45% right now, so this would be one of our, the highest interest that we pay on anything. I don't know if there is a different index, or something that, I like setting it one time a year, but I don't know if this is the, if this is the correct index.
I questioned that also and investigated it. I'd never heard of this index before. It, and actually, what they list is the... It, and actually what they list is the seven-day rate. So it...
What are we paying now?
We have a balance of approximately six hundred thousand dollars, is it, or is it more than that? I can't remember. I'd have to look and see what the outstanding balance is. That we, improvements to the Law Enforcement Center that were funded by Nobles County and our share of those expenses, there is an outstanding balance which we pay one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars each year towards that. And then it will either, if more projects are added, that balance may increase or it will decrease by the one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars each year that we levy for...
Do we pay in interest rate now?
Two point, two point three four percent. That was the interest rate that was set by Nobles County at the last amended lease.
And that, that was what, when?
Was it two thousand...
Twenty?
Maybe it was twenty.
Nineteen or twenty.
You reviewed every, every number of years?
At that time, the lease stated, that was the interest rate on the bond that built the Law Enforcement Center in two thousand and two. And the city was responsible for one of the bonds, which was paid off and matured in twenty twenty-two. Over the course of time, we had accrued a balance due from things like adding onto the garage, re-roof, there's been numerous building projects out there that the city's responsible for zero percent if it's involved in the court system, fifteen point nine seven percent if it's part of the entire system like the roof, or up to fifty, fifty percent like the garage addition that we, our police department has half of the fifty percent of use of. So those capital expenses are accounted for and kept track of and a running balance. And rather than the, the one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that we have levied every year that went to pay down our portion of the bond, we now keep levying that and we pay down our portion of those capital expenses that have accrued. So previous lease provisions maintained that interest rate at that two point three four percent that was the bond rate back in two thousand and two. County Board has requested that that lease rate be adjusted annually to reflect current economic conditions. But I had the same questions about this.
I think we all chimed in on the email but never got a response that I saw. I was never, I had never seen a response to our question. The first line, if you go on the magicfund.org, which is where it comes from...
Where do you see magic fund?
That's what it stands, M-A.
Magic is Minnesota Association of Governmental Investing for Counties. It flat out says, "The current seven-day yield, also referred to as the current annualized yield, represents the net change exclusive of capital change and income other than investment income in the value of a hypothetical amount with a balance of one share over a seven-day base period expressed on a percentage of the value of one share at the beginning of the seven-day period." Why that one is being used for an annual rate, I'm...
What would be, what would be a typical index that would be used for a changing rate?
I would think something similar to what we are able to bond, you know, something like this is where I would anticipate it to come in. I wouldn't expect to see something above five percent, but can we ask for a little bit of insight?
Even if we took old, even if we took, they aren't using LIBOR anymore or whatever, but I mean, even if we went off a twenty-four hour old LIBOR rate and did this, using that one makes zero sense.
I would say maybe a simpler option and a more common one would be looking at prime and you could say prime plus one percent or prime plus, you know, a percent and a half or something like that. I think in my opinion, that would make it maybe easier to find and I think the magic fund is their investment fund and it is common knowledge of, you know, counties and that world for investments, but I don't think it would be considered in the greater world a standard for an index for something like this, in my opinion. So I, I mean, I think prime or...
What is it, current?
Five four four. That's what it is currently listed as.
Which prime?
I knew you were going to ask me that as soon as I said that. I don't know off the top of my head, but I could, could get that for you.
Five and a quarter to five fifty.
That makes sense. So I mean, I think a standard such as, you know, the prime interest rate is going to be an easier rate to track and understand and know what it is, especially as people on both sides of, you know, the city and county boards, administrators...
That's a federal fund.
Staff change.
The federal fund, right?
Yeah, oh yes, yes. And that, that's what I'm referring to as a more standard.
I mean, if you're going to a bank, it's in the eights, but for a federal fund...
And I think, again, my opinion is, again, these are likely tax exempt bonds or, you know, that it's not necessarily comparable to what you would find at the bank. It would be lower, so that might be something to consider too.
Yeah, I don't have any argument of paying it different than the whatever two that we were paying. I get that completely. They're borrowing money to do major projects and this and that. I get it. I'm not opposed to that. Just find us a fund that makes a rate based off of something. I just don't get using that one because it's intergovernmental for, not for the same borrowing purposes that anything's going to be done with funds for that building. So I think we just ask the question again and actually ask for an answer instead of just being sent something and say, why are we basing it off of this like we asked, opposed to using a standard federal rate? I'm fine with the purpose of the lease and giving them a proper rate. Not a problem at all.
Right. I think asking the question is legit.
All right, we can...
Table that.
Table that, we can, thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would just move no action, not move no action, I would just not do any action because if we table it, then we have to state a date.
State a date to bring it back.
So then we have to have an answer to act on it if you technically table it. If we just go with no action, it's still open until we do it, according to Mr. Roberts.
Okay. That, we have no action on amended lease, on to city council engineering.
First item I have, receive report and order hearing on Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue reconstruction improvement project. Including in exhibit, exhibit one is a feasibility report on the proposed improvement of Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue reconstruction from Ninth Street to Eleventh Street by, regarding base reconstruction, curb and gutter reconstruction, resurfacing, sidewalk reconstruction, and utility mains and service replacement. The report provides information on the proposed improvement, including cost, costs and fundings, estimated assessment rates, city share, and related improvements. Staff recommends that council accept the report and pass the resolution receiving the report and calling for hearing on the proposed improvement. If resolution shown as exhibit two is adopted, the public hearing will take place at the December eleventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting.
I think this should, this just brings it to the point where we're actually going to be able to say, okay, what do we really want in it? What do we have for a base structure and to be able to actually get a real cost on it, correct?
We, in the feasibility, there is a cost in the feasibility report, how much it's going to cost total, but the more breakdown will be available...
There's a lot of variables there that we didn't say yes or no to.
Correct. With the hearing, we, all the details of breakdown of the cost will be available with the presentation of all the little details by Bolton and Inc.
Yeah, that's...
So this is just, really just receiving the report and then more detailed will be for purpose of the public hearing is where we're preparing.
I'd move to adopt the report so we can continue moving on and actually get people's feedback and see what the finer details are of if we want these light posts and if we want bump outs and all that because till you really narrow it down, there's a lot of coulda, woulda, shouldas in there or...
We did have a open house this Wednesday at a fire hall inviting all the Third and Fourth Avenue business owners and stuff and we received a lot of comments and mostly positive comments, some concerned about mostly the parking lot, parking spaces that we're probably losing four total, I think, four or five, six in that range. But mostly people were happy with what they were seeing in the graphics, but with, with very limited details yet being available in the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a first and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, second item, the twenty twenty-four stormwater utility budget and first reading of an ordinance to amend the stormwater utility rate. The proposed twenty twenty-four stormwater utility fund operating and capital improvements budgets and equipment revolving schedule are in the process of being updated. There was a five point seven percent increase in the rate for twenty twenty-three. The stormwater management requirements for the community continues to increase. The city is experiencing a significant increase in cost for construction and the needs to update capacity, failing pipes and structures. The current utility operating revenue is projected to be seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. Just a footnote of that, Mindot just released the email news to us that they, they got twelve percent increase in their construction cost, just this year alone. It is recommended that the rate be increased by seventy-six thousand two hundred dollars to cover inflationary cost of construction materials. As proposed, the twenty twenty-four storm sewer fund budget will require a ten percent stormwater utility rate increase. City council adopt an ordinance establishing the city's stormwater system as a utility in December of twenty, two thousand and three. The ordinance set the annual stormwater fee rate for residential use. The annual rate is adjusted by the multiplier based on land use multiplied by the property area and billed in twelve monthly payments. The ordinance is required to amend the stormwater utility rate. The base rate required to meet the twenty twenty-four revenue required in requirement is three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents per acre. The current annual residential rate is three hundred and twelve dollars per acre. The area of the residential lot is defined as point two four acres yielding a proposed twenty twenty-four monthly residential charge of six dollars and eighty-seven cents or sixty-three cents more than the current rate of six dollar and twenty-four cents. The annual cost will increase seven dollars fifty-six cents per residential lot. The per acre rates for land use other than residential will be shown as below and for other examples are next chart. Staff recommends that council approve the first reading of the ordinance shown as exhibit three to amend the base annual rate to three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents per acre. Should the proposed rate increase be approved, the twenty twenty-four stormwater utility fund operating and capital improvements budgets, as well as equipment revolving, revolving schedule will be updated and presented for council approved, approval of the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. And the plan for increasing the rate will probably rate, increase it again next year about the same amount and couple more years just to catch up with the construction increase, construction cost increase and just to catch up what if, how much we were behind actually.
Can, can you identify the number of storm system structures that are in need of repair?
It's actually more than a hundred structures in the list to be replaced.
And how many were we able to repair in twenty twenty-three?
Two.
Two?
And the public works give three, so five total. And we added about twenty-two to the list when we did inspections this year.
So we lost ground in twenty twenty-three?
Seven, additional ones from twenty twenty-three.
Part of this funding increase is we'd like to have a two-person team dedicated during the construction season of doing the, of repairing our storm sewer structures, catch basin, manhole, through the, a number of months through the, through the construction season. And it wasn't just that we couldn't get to them, we couldn't contract or hire others to do it because of their workload. So we have an opportunity to be able to dedicate two people specifically on storm sewer system maintenance. So that's funding, part of this increase is funding that undertaking.
Well, and somewhat shame on us for leaving it for twenty years. That's, should be said, I think. There should be bumps. I don't know, anything that we've done construction-wise on any infrastructure in the community, streets, underground, water lines, anything that has gone down in cost. I, I'm, I'm not positive. Maybe, well, I guess we could say the street lighting, eh, because we went to LEDs. That's maybe the one thing, but we just need to keep up better because it's not getting cheaper.
Before previous, well, last year went up five point seven percent. The three years before that, we only raised it combined four point two percent.
Yeah.
So from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, it went up four point two percent combined. And our cost, it wasn't matching our cost for our construction cost and we continue to try to...
But didn't you say the base rate was set in two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three, yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, rates are going to go up every year in the, in the construction cost stuff, but to have a base rate that's twenty years old, what in our life has stayed the same in cost twenty years from now in construction? Nothing, so...
So until we catch up, that cost will probably increase about the same amount rate for numbers of years.
I'd move to approve the first reading as presented.
Okay, first and second, any further discussion? Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
We should actually, yeah. Did you call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Is that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Onto committee reports.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
No report.
No report.
The Transit Board met on November 2nd, and we are hiring a new director. It's with the current amount of time that the current director, I think she's only allocated two hours a week to the Transit Board, and so we just don't think it's been getting an adequate amount of attention to make our city bus successful. So that is something that is currently, I don't believe that they've closed that hiring process yet, so I think that's still available.
That's through the SMOC office, correct?
Yeah, yeah, through SMOC. We had a Nobles County Child Care Task Force meeting, and one thing that they did discuss was that they are working on a childcare subsidy right now to cover up to one month of childcare when there is an emergency for a family. It's kind of when there's a big group of people that don't qualify for state assistance, but they still struggle to afford childcare, and so this is kind of a very short-term need. They're working on guidelines right now for how people could apply for that, but it would be a very short-term, up to a month of coverage for childcare assistance. For the HRA, our new director did start, so that was Tanner Rogers, and he began a week ago today. And then one thing, just to kind of bring to everyone's attention, it's already been resolved, but the Glenwood Heights residents had asked about getting streetlights turned on, so we've turned it on for one of the two streets that is now open there. The one that goes up to the top, Aspen Drive, I believe it's called, those streetlights were not on yet, and so residents had kind of urged or expressed some frustration about things that were happening up there with, there being no lighting at nighttime, and so the Public Utilities was very responsive, and within a week, they actually had the lighting turned on, so we were very happy with that result. That's all.
Thank you.
Chad?
Through Chamber CBB, Forward Worthington, and WRADC, we've reviewed and looking to continue the marketing of Worthington and went over the annual plan. If you've traveled anywhere throughout Minnesota into Wisconsin or the Dakotas, you very well may have heard ads promoting Worthington, and we've had a lot of response over the last year and a half to two years that we've been doing it, and through that contract, so that was one of the major renewals that was recommended by the marketing committee to go before the Forward Worthington full board, because we've heard a lot of positives from businesspeople in town, other community members in town hearing that, and a lot of people calling either City Hall or Forward Worthington's offices talking about the things that have been promoted in town. So that moved forward, and that's, that's the only thing I have for this meeting.
Steve?
Just a reminder, Thursday and Friday is the Coalition Agreed to Minnesota Cities Fall Conference, and several of us will be able to attend. Well, on that Friday morning, we get the latest update on wages and employee situation that Brandon, Brandon always gives. Also, on this Thursday, we'll have the bid opening for the improvements at the Center for Active Living on the water damage on the, on the rack of all courts. If you recall, we rejected the earlier bids and are rebidding them. And then next week, Thursday and Friday, City Hall, City Operations will be closed for Thanksgiving. So, any other questions? That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Okay. Motion second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion? All in the, opposed, same sign. Motion carried.